Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Board Meeting. I will start with introductions to my right.
I'm Pamela Berman.
I'm McLaurin.
Jeremy Baldwin.
Kimberly O'Brien.
Dave Robson.
Michael Page.
David Nader with T E C.
Jake McIntyre, also with T E C.
Okay. First item up tonight, thirty-six Old Ting Road.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
Land Engineering was in, probably a couple of meetings ago, for an A and R on thirty-six Old Ting Road. And, once that was done, we noticed there was a slight adjustment that needed to be made on the lot line, abutting the Tingsboro Sports Center. You see where the new line at the bottom? I think you reviewed the plan, and yeah. So, we're in just for that modification with a new A and R.
Okay. You've looked at it? Oh, I'm sorry, Jake's on tonight.
Yeah, the adjustment of the lot line didn't change anything from what was previously approved. The only note we had was that it's a map, twenty-one parcel twenty-seven remains in nonconformance.
Okay. Jeremy, anything?
No questions.
Emily? Mike?
No, nothing.
Okay. I guess someone wants to make a motion to approve the adjustments?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment as shown on the plans stated, Loll Third, two thousand and twenty-five, four twenty-five Ingalls Road, map nine parcel fifteen.
Nope, nope, nope. Thirty-six Old Ting Road.
Do I get a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes.
Yeah, you can leave it here and they'll sign it before they leave tonight and pick it up next. Thanks.
Next item up is twenty-five Ingalls Road. I believe they asked for a continuance, Ben?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, I guess, did they say when they wanted to come, is it next meeting they're gonna come back?
Yep, we need a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to, for a continuance for twenty-five Ingalls Road? I'm sorry?
To May first.
Next meeting, May first?
Yeah, May first.
Okay, yeah, to May first?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing, opposed, none? Next up, forty-five Middle Six Road. Map twenty-eight parcel one oh seven dash zero. James Benin? Okay, glad you said that for me. Advocate for a special permit as well as any other permit relief as required by the town of Tingsboro zoning bylaws to operate a personal services business in an existing building in a one, an I one, rather, zoning district to be known as Nashua Cougars Chair Center advertised in the Lowell Sun April third and tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If you want to introduce yourself.
Mr. Chair, this is a new hearing.
Oh.
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the butters list and notices?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You want to introduce yourself and give us a little?
I'm Jim Benalati. I'm the president of our Nashua Cougars Football and Chair. We're a nonprofit organization out of Nashua. We just looked at the space on forty-five Tingsboro Road and came to an agreement with the landlord and he was okay with us having the space and said I have to come in front of you guys to get it approved, so.
Okay. Chaz? I'm sorry. Jeremy, I'll start with you.
Alright, so this is a use variance? Is that correct? Alright, and it's, right now, this is the, when was this building constructed? Do you know at all?
It's fairly new.
I thought so too.
Been, I think, a couple of years, maybe?
I'm just trying to familiar-
Twenty twenty-one, September of two thousand and twenty-one.
I'm just trying to familiarize myself with the businesses that are here. Do you know the current businesses in the?
There, there's an electrical company. There's a brewery. And then, there is-
The porta-potties.
What's that?
The porta-potties.
Oh, it's a porta-party in the other one?
Yep, I remember that too.
Are they still there?
I, I don't think they, uh-
I don't think they're there.
They leave, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're there.
I don't think they're there, 'cause I'm just saying.
I don't even think they ever really got established. I never saw them move, really move in down there.
'Cause I think that's the space I'm, I'm renting.
Oh, alright.
As well, they were, I'm not, not one hundred percent sure, but that's what I'm guessing. But, for now, I know there's a brewery. The electrical company who is occupied by the owner of the building. And, there is one other spot rented out and I have no idea what they do. Very quiet. So, they just use it for storage, so I don't, I don't know what this, what they do.
Could you explain, maybe, the number of staff hours and anticipated parking requirements?
Typically, it, it would be like a Monday through Saturday type situation. Mostly, it would be later in the day. Four, around four to eight practice. We'd be using it for practice spots, a practice spot. It would typically drop off, so, I mean, probably like four to five coaches would be there at a time, which would probably equal four to five cars at a time. Yeah, the parents aren't allowed to stay for the practice, so it's typically like twenty kids per practice. And it would be broken up from the four to eight. So, they would be coming in and going two-hour increments. Other than that, Saturday would be like a, probably more like a ten to two type of situation during the week, four to eight. Once in a while, I mean, during the summertime, we might have some, a clinic there or something, but other than that.
Those are all the questions I have at the moment.
Kim?
I didn't have any other questions besides that, how many staff you thought you'd have?
Mike?
So, you said, how many cars per hour do you expect?
Um, anywhere between fifteen and twenty, dropping off.
And then, alright, most of the parents would leave, presumably?
Yeah, it's usually a two-hour practice, so they don't usually hang around, so they usually drop off and drive away.
My only comment would-
What's that, the brewery, so yeah, maybe some-
I drive by a lot, it doesn't look like it's filled, the parking is very filled. That would be my only concern, is that, that we're gonna have an influx of a lot, a lot of parking at condensed times.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We're gonna have an influx of parking at condensed times. You know, from four to six, you're gonna have twenty-plus cars coming in there, so that would be my only comment on the approval.
Where would drop off be? More, more in the front of the building?
Building.
Is, are you just renting the top of it, or do you have a top and bottom?
It's a top and a bottom.
Okay.
And we could do it either way, top.
Yep.
Drop off at the back or the front.
Okay. That's, I know the area pretty well, so.
There's not much traffic there.
No.
I mean, in the building, typically. I mean, there's usually like three or four cars there.
Yep. He does have a car show every now and then over there, but-
Yeah, I guess they're trying to do that again this year.
Yeah, so later at night. Okay. You have something else, Mike?
No.
Jeremy?
I think, just, I guess, as a discussion element, my main concern with ever putting stuff in industrial parcels is, it looks, it's, it's like the gymnastics type stuff, just making sure there's proper safety on site for the drop off. It looks like you, I mean, you run off hours of likely the other facilities as well, which is, which is good. I think that's just where I always come from with these, just making sure they're, they're safe for the kids as they're dropped off, because I can, I have a kid in gymnastics and, and dance in some of these facilities, so I know how they can be a little hectic, because it's just originally not designed for that use, but, I mean, it, it makes a lot of sense, it's, it's a vacant space. Appreciate you guys coming to Tingsboro for your business. And so, yeah, that's just my two cents.
Anything else, Kim? Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank.
Make a use permit?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the use permit for twenty-five Ingalls Road, map seven parcel fifteen.
Forty-five Middle Six Road.
Alright, here we go again. Make a motion to approve the use permit for forty-five Middle Six Road, map twenty-eight parcel one oh seven dash zero.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to town, good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
Well, Chad definitely is gonna keep his job when he gets back.
Yeah, exactly. I don't have my glasses tonight either. Next up, four oh five, four oh nine Middle Six Road, Yellow House Cannabis, continued from, what was it, last date? Pam, if you would?
The third.
April third.
Uh, April third.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, Douglas DeShane from Fineran and Nicholson, representing Yellow House Cannabis LLC. With me this evening, Mike Allen, the manager of the LLC. You will recall that we were before the board two weeks ago, seeking a modification to our permit. The reason for those modifications, as you know, and we discussed at length, was a number of errors made by my clients in constructing the site without coming back to ask for a modification. And, we have apologized for that and accepted responsibility for it. And we're before you last time, and again tonight, to try and satisfy the board that we are going to correct the wrongs, will be very protective of public safety, and, and, you know, want to move forward with this project and get this business open. You'll recall there were generally four, three major modifications that were done that we are now seeking permission for. The first, you'll recall, was the fact that in determining that the ultimate location of the building, in fact, was not going to be the requisite five hundred feet from the other cannabis store in town. Again, erroneously, decision was made and implemented to slide the building over so that it met the four hun, the five hundred feet, I think we're at five oh two. However, in doing so, we moved the building four feet. That resulted in some changes to the landscaping and the pavement around, in front of the building. We did still ring it in granite curb as we were supposed to, but, you know, a slight modification to the paving because of the four-foot shift. The other impact of moving the building was that, as you'll recall, we had the building, the road went around it, and then we had a sloped, sloped, slope, grass slope, you know, heading to the south side of the building, which was proposed to be vegetated. And again, that was at a two-to-one, a three-to-one slope. As pointed out by your peer reviewer, a two-to-one slope, while acceptable and not detrimental to drainage or public safety or anything else, does require a, I think, a little more thought in how it's landscaped so that it was, you know, stable. And, more importantly, so that it doesn't have to be maintained, because it's hard mowing a two-to-one slope if you just grass it. So, we did submit to the board a landscape plan that should, that proposes a, a landscape plan along that way. And again, you recall, this is to the south of the building. It's on the right-hand side here. And, we are providing, proposing to plant, well, I, rather than, let me just read from the, the plan so that I'm not erroneous in, in what we're proposing here. The intent of it was to install a purple leaf winter creeper, which is a low-growing stabilizing ground cover, which is perfect for this situation. The species only grows to about twelve inches in height at maximum. It does not require any kind of mowing or maintenance at all, just a, a green ground cover that will stabilize. And then, of course, that will be planted around the shrubs and existing trees that were proposed not to be touched or to be planted. So, this is our proposed, with respect to the modification, again, we are looking for approval of the movement of the building and the adjustment to the landscaping around the building. And also, a modification to allow for this planting plan for that previously two to, three-to-one slope, which is now two-to-one. So, I'll just run through and then we can go back with testing. Alright, questions? You recall the second, the second change? Well, actually, I described the first two, moving the building and the associated landscaping around it, and then the new landscaping plan for the slope. The third item that was identified by your peer reviewer as not conforming to the permit was the fact that bituminous curbing was put at the entranceway where we were required to place granite curbing. We are not here to ask you to consider a modification that would allow that to stay. In fact, I'm coming here to present to you our plan for how we are going to, in fact, install that in accordance with your original approval. As you recall, my clients are, are hoping to be able to open this facility as soon as possible. But, we certainly have to assure this board that we will meet our obligations and protect public safety in doing so. So, what we did, as was discussed last week, is that we would, we're presenting a plan here that would allow us to, to modify these curbs, hopefully while we are open, without creating any kind of public safety. I think, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there was a determination made that the, the curbs that are there today present a public safety concern, but rather, they were just not in conformance with what we were supposed to do. So, again, I'm not asking you to accept the modification to allow it to stay, but I do want to say that what's there today has been determined to be, you know, safe in terms of public safety. So, in presenting this plan on how we're gonna get that curb in, and again, hopefully while we're open, we've designed the plan here, we've given it to you, your peer reviewer, to look at. And, they've lined out a, a process by which they'll do one side at a time. The curb is still on order, we have been told that we could see it delivered in as soon as three to four weeks. We have the landscaping company, or the installer company, ready on, under contract, ready to jump on this. Mr. Allen went and spoke with police chief to discuss the kinds of police details that they would require during this work, if it was to be done during operating hours. And, has, has agreed that the, the town can provide, and will provide, the necessary detail while this work is being done. And in fact, reiterated the fact that it would be required to have details. So, as you've required, you know, and that's also a requirement of the police chief. So, and again, all of this is certainly at our expense. My understanding of the process is that they would shut down one lane, without our police detail there. They would sure first have to cut out the, my two minutes curbing. They would dig along that, that contour, and then they would set the granite, the granite in, cement, and then I would assume top coat, the, the concrete, I mean, the pavement to, to finish. They're estimating, and I was sure to say, I want to know the truth here, in terms of, don't tell me it's gonna be done in a day, and then, you know, two weeks later. So, they said, you know, obviously weather-dependent, but it was likely that they could, they would let, take less than one week per side. But they wanted, again, I wanted to know what would be the most we would be talking about here, and they said, well, why don't we assume five days on each side? We could possibly lose a day from weather, we could, whatever. But again, just trying to make sure. So, this is the plan that we are proposing. And, I, I guess, I hope we've addressed everything we talked about last week. You wanted to make sure, that you wanted us to show you how it could be done, how it could be done safely. Verify that, that the police department was acceptable with it and could provide the necessary services. We verified that. And, we still can do this work under our curb cut with the DOT. So, there, there's nothing stopping us from doing the work. In fact, if we had the curb, we could be doing it now. But, again, we, we, we're susceptible to this three-to-four week delivery. And, you know, we, we just have to plan accordingly and have all of our ducks in a row to get it done. And, we are prepared to do that. So, I guess what I'm asking the board tonight is to consider the three modifications, which would allow us to get that buttoned up. And then, I'm looking for your comments on our proposed methodology for getting this curb installed. Again, not a modification to the permit. Just a, an opportunity to do it correct. And, as I've stated at the last meeting, we would respectfully ask the board to consider, in granting this modification, that they could almost put a condition on it, that not only are you allowing the modifications, but you're conditioning those modifications on our completion of the, the, the entranceway in accordance with the original approvals. Of course, at the end of that work, whether, you know, all of the work, we would submit a final as-built to the town engineer for review so that they can verify to this board that things have been done correctly this time. But again, I would like to ask you to consider, discuss the fact that, you know, we would ask the, the, we'd like the permission of the board to ask the building inspector to issue just a temporary occupancy permit, which would allow us to open, begin generating some money, not only for my client, but certainly for the town of Tingsboro. And, you know, one of the things that's most troublesome in this whole deal is, as I said at the last meeting, all of our employees have been hired, they've all been trained, they're all ready to start. Met, met, most of them, the vast majority of them are local folks, you know, Tingsboro, Drake it, Lowell, a couple from Nashua. But, you know, they're all folks ready to get to work. We believe that in opening, we will, can safely get this curb in as quickly as possible without any public safety problems. And, okay, frankly, I know you guys have been having a lot of trouble with the other facility up, up the road. You mentioned it at the last hearing, you know, they don't have curbs at the entrance. They, their parking, as I understand, perhaps is, is, is undersized. But, if you'll recall, when we had our hearings with you, you certainly used them as an example of why we should be doing it the way we did it and the way we should have done it. And I do think, once our store opens, it will take some of the pressure off of that one and hopefully help resolve some of their problems as well, so. We're here to answer any questions you have, or your peer reviewer may have. You know, seek any direction you might give us in, in approving these modifications and allowing us to move forward with this curb installation. We, we're not kidding around here, guys, we really appreciated your opportunity to let us make this right, wrong, or wrong-right. And, again, Mike has taken responsibility for it, and he's now taken responsibility for making sure it's done correctly and resolved. So, I, I'd ask for your indulgence and, and your comments on what we've presented.
Before I open it up to the board, real quick, are you familiar with the original permit? And what the curbing looked like?
The curbing at the entrance?
The curbing looked like, the entire place?
Generally, yes.
Okay, you want to tell me what it is?
Well, I guess.
Not familiar with it?
Well, I, I-
Understandable.
Dave, what I recall, is we were required to install granite curbing.
Yep.
Around the building, around some of the parking areas, and the front area.
Do you want to see the plan?
And we had some islands.
It's all supposed to be granite?
Okay.
This, this is, this is what we were getting at, like, none of the process was followed. So, just so the board members know, and I'm sure some of yous remember, the entire place was granite curbing. I have one more question. Good with trees at the place? No trees were lost in the movement of the parking lot?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Alright. I'll open it up to the board now, Jeremy?
Just like to say, the plantings on the south, positive. I guess, one of the things you'll tend to hear is, it would be nice if it was natives. I don't know, I'm not an arborist or a landscape architect, but I, I think it is a, I think that is a good pollinator, which is good, because we have across the street at the, what is it, the Car Wash, they have a pollinating garden over there as well, so that's a positive. But, I, I think you get a little bit of an uphill battle on the, on the curbing stuff, I won't lie. I mean, I would, I, I mean, I, we, we represent the town, the citizens in town, and this has been a little bit of a nightmare for what's happening between the other facility across the street. I mean, I, I've seen people almost get hit and killed crossing that street, running across from the restaurant across the street. And, I'm just generally nervous about accepting this because of what, how it can exacerbate the problem, just right now. I think it's gonna, in the future, when this is open, I think it's gonna cure some of the problem. But, it's, you know, to have police details and the confusion as you're coming both from Nashua and going to Nashua, you have that uncommon, it backs up already with the facility across the street, and so you're forced to come- And so, you're forced to come into the other land coming towards Tingsborough. And now, you're going to have the struggle of people turning left into your facility where they can't get into it. And they're, everything's kind of bogged down into one access road or one driveway since it's not two. So, I mean, I, I do appreciate the effort and I get what you guys are going through with, you know, losing money and every day with this not being open. But, I mean, from a safety perspective, that's just where I have to look at it. And it's, it's just, I'm hard pressed to say this is a safe situation as it's getting installed. That's it.
Just want some clarification. What are the plants that are going to be planted? We're talking about the, the area that's sort of behind the building, right? This area is the one that's more, that's steeper than originally planned?
It's to the right side, looking at the building, so abutting the gas station.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Pam reminded me that, just to let you know, Emily did approve this. And she suggested non-invasive species for the plantings and stuff. And so, she signed off on that as well, so just to give context to the planting side of it as well.
Okay.
Our conservation director.
Kim, I can answer your question. If you look at this plan, see to the right of the building where the one, two, three, four trees are? That used to be a three to one slope.
Right.
And it was going to be grassed.
Okay.
And treated, so you could mow it.
Okay.
Because of the movement of the building, it's now a two to one slope, which is a little steep for mowing grass. So, we're proposing to replace it with this non-invasive ground cover. It just is beautiful green, it grows to no more than 12 inches tall.
What did you call it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because the plan says dwarf sweet spire, and I looked that up, and then you mentioned winter leaf.
Well.
That, that's what Ben was mentioning.
Winter creeper.
He has the plant, the original plan, the plan that you have, and what's up on the screen is dated April 15th, which is the plan that Emily approved after reviewing the species.
Okay, so the plant that you mentioned is not what's going in. What's going in is dwarf.
Dwarf sweet spire plant, yes.
Which is a tall ornamental grass.
I apologize if I've got my species wrong.
Yeah, no, I, I looked at it just so I could see it. But I just, I'm confused because that's not what you said, that's all, I just want clarification.
Okay, I apologize, I thought I was reading from this plan.
Ben, do you have what, Emily?
Four, ten, twenty-five?
That's the old plan.
Yeah, it's, it's the dwarf, dwarf, what's it called?
Dwarf sweet spire.
The notes I got from the, the person was that it was a low-growing, 12-inch maximum height, you know, no need to mow.
No need to mow is right, but that's, yeah, the dwarf sweet spire is.
That's the current, yeah.
And that's the native plant that she wanted?
Yes.
Yes, okay, then that's the one we're proposing. I apologize, I was reading from the wrong plan.
And there's still going to be some rip rap?
No.
Yeah, there's a little bit.
Well.
Well, there was radio, right?
Right, but there's no, no new rip rap. It was where the rip rap was before.
So, that was always supposed to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I just, can I ask you, when you pointed out, you said there was supposed to be granite curbing everywhere? Where is there not granite curbing?
There's none coming out, there's none around here, none around here, none down around the back. There's, there's a lot of granite curbing that needs to be replaced, not replaced, installed, according to our plan. He has the original plan, if you want to take a peek at it.
Can I, can we see it, yeah? I would like to see it. But you said there is some granite curbing at the site.
Every bit of it's granite.
Right?
What's that?
Last meeting, you mentioned that there is granite curbing there, but they kind of stopped doing granite and switched over at some point for some reason.
Yeah, the building, the building in the, the landscape areas around the building are all granite.
Should be all granite.
The landscape areas around the building?
I can't see.
Right here?
Someone pointed something?
Just around the building, around the building.
Around the building itself.
There is a section of the driveway that has some granite curbing as well, the driveway that goes off to the right.
It's the as-built, if you want to compare the two.
Okay.
And, and again, I, I do apologize for my lack of understanding, but I know, I know the town, you know, I don't recall a project I've done in town where we weren't required to do granite at the entrances, the roundings, the, you know, buildings, landscape islands. Is it typically this board's requirement to have granite curbing within the parking lot itself?
Yep. We've been moving more and more to it every single place.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, because I, I consider.
Not to mention, Attorney Deschanel, this was already approved of what they were doing. So, this is no surprise.
Yes, I, I understand.
I just want to look at this, you can go on.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Thank you.
Mike?
If you were to get the occupancy permit, when would you, when would you open? When would you propose opening?
Next week, if, if, if we can make it happen that quickly, mobilize staff. We're ready, we, we've hired, as Doug had mentioned, Attorney Deschanel had mentioned, we've hired staff. Everything's ready to operationalize.
It's just unfortunate, I mean, obviously, it's going to be a crowded, you know, opening, and this work being done at the entrance does seem to propose, to create a safety hazard, especially with increased demand at that time. And then, I, I wasn't involved for this granite curbing everywhere, but that seems to be quite the discrepancy.
Excuse me just a moment.
Sure.
Because that was the original, was that they were. I don't know, you just pointed it out to me.
Do you know why those, the two, the two in the back were left as the concrete?
The arrow points forward and back, right? What does that mean?
I know, I, I can't even see it.
It kind of has a line going this way and a line going that way.
But it was all granite, all the way around.
Yeah, I can see this as proposed granite here, I didn't see anything on the side. We asked for proposed granite behind the entrance.
Yep, the entire thing. Attorney Deschanel?
Thank you for the time, I apologize. I, I, I guess I have to apologize for my own misunderstanding in reviewing, you know, the, the town peer reviewer. I, I didn't, it just wasn't obvious to me that there was, that there was a lack of the granite curb within the parking lot itself. I was focused on the entranceway, because I knew that was critical.
While we're on the topic of the entranceway, the little island that you guys put in the front, it's not even the length of a car.
It's what the plans, it's what was in the plans, the, the design plans that was installed.
That length? It's, it's not even, it doesn't, it doesn't even give you the impression of which way you want to go. It's that tiny.
It, it is a different shape.
Yes.
Than what's in the plan. Do you want to see this, so you can see the difference? Like, this one is longer and has a curve, which would have a shape that would.
Which would have had the granite curve around it.
It was supposed to make it so they knew they had to take a right-hand turn.
Can you see how this one is sort of longer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, that's like a, just a little dome.
It's not even the length of a car. I, I go in there, I check on the place daily.
Then, then if that is wrong, part of our reconstruction of the entranceway will be to, to make sure it's built according to that and granite curb.
It's granite.
And let me, let me address your concerns. I, I, we're certainly cognizant of the fact that, and I mean, I, I understand your cognizant of fact of the situation we're running into right now financially and, and otherwise. But I, I, I'm also aware of your concerns that while we could probably have police details and, and do it right, I don't disagree that, you know, it's, it's always disruptive, right? When you have a police detail working on there. So, what I've suggested to my client, and he has agreed to allow me to provide to you, is we would commit, with, with your permission, if we could be allowed to open during the interim while we're waiting for the granite to come, that when the granite comes and it's time to put it in, we'll shut down.
That doesn't, that doesn't fix any of the problems that you guys have had since December 17th to correct.
Well, what, what do you mean?
This, this is what kind of, kind of I, I expressed the last time.
Yeah?
It, it was a lack of communication, and now here we are, and, and if, so you got. Mike, you got your temporary occupancy permit in December 17th? Knowing that all these things had to be done still, that you agreed to with our building inspector. But, hold on, so, when was the granite ordered?
The granite?
Yep, when, when?
To do this here, the driveway entrance?
Well, yeah, because it was December 17th, when, when you got your temporary occupancy and telling our building inspector that you were going to follow up on all this stuff. So, when, when did you order the granite?
I, I need to correct you because we didn't have a temporary occupancy, we had a full occupancy permit.
Okay, your occupancy permit.
Right.
That's fine.
And when did we, we, this was, until the, we came to this, to this board, and this issue was clearly not a negotiable issue where we had to put granite in. That's when the granite was ordered, which was two weeks ago, when I, when I contracted with, with the, with the site work guy to, a company to, to do the work.
So, so when you met with our building inspector December 17th, there was no stipulations about the granite? It was never talked about, the granite curbing?
No. And, and, and let me, can I explain?
Sure.
As I told you at, at the last meeting, and have, you know, apologized profusely for because I am accepting responsibility. I know you didn't think I was at the last meeting, but I did. But, but again, in, I'm not a, I am not a person who works in the construction field. I hired and I paid a lot of money to professionals to, to, to help guide this project and do it the right way, the Tingsborough way, and make sure we were complying with all the special permit requirements. I have a letter from an engineer that says we complied, that's been supplied to the board, with all the special permit requirements. Why would I think anything different, Dave? Why, why, Mr. Chairman, I, why would I think anything different? That, why would I want to come before this board and, and subject myself to, to, you know, being accused of fraudulently obtaining my permits? That was never my intent, that was never my intent to not comply with the permits. I thought we were compliant. There was a substitution of material, clearly, that made us not compliant. I did not view, I was not, you know, knowingly aware that we were violating the special permit. I, I've told you that. Now, I still accept responsibility for it, to be clear. And, and I'm asking the board for honestly some mercy here in, in, in that we've spent over $4 million on, on, on building a building, trying to do it the right way, trying to, trying to make it a first-class building in the, in the town of Tingsborough. And, and I, to put it bluntly, I want to open. I, I, I know everyone wants us.
Absolutely.
We have jobs that we created for the town. We have revenue we want to generate for the town, a lot of revenue, I think. And so, I get, I get this whole issue that we screwed up. And, and I'm not, I'm not making excuses there, we screwed up. I'm asking for this board to show, have a willingness to at least let me open. Let me open, I'll get these things done. I will, I will comply with whatever this board requires in terms of granite curbing and, and the landscaping that needs to be done on the side of that building. That's what I can commit to you. I'm not, I, I, I'm not going to sit here and, and tell you anything different. And, and I just, I, I guess I'm asking for the board to show some, a willingness to, to work with me on this. We screwed up, I'm trying to fix it, I'm trying to fix it.
Well, I think you've heard everybody talk except one, I haven't talked yet about it, but the safety aspect of it. And I still stand where I was two weeks ago. There's no way, just to let you know, that I would be approving anything to open up there with the amount of traffic that goes through and what goes on at those places. Even with police there, nobody pays attention, at all. They, it's a free-for-all at those places. And we do have, every single, almost daily, we have town residents complaining about it. So, just to let you know, that's where I stand. I, I will not be approving for you to open until this granite curbing's installed.
I think everything else, the planting and all that stuff, we already said our engineer is fine with the, the building where it is. But other than that, it's up to you guys what you want to do tonight, but.
Well, let me ask this question, then, let's take it one step at a time. I think what you've said is that for the three modifications we're requesting, that there seems to be some support for that. So, perhaps the board could approve those modifications so that we can get that done. I'd like an opportunity to, and, and assuming the board votes for the modifications, and given that we now have a reduced number, and I need four votes, I would appreciate your candor in whether or not you're going to approve the modifications only. Because, I mean, obviously, if, if, if we don't get at least past that, you know, we're dead in the water. And, you know, we can't move the building back. So, if we could talk about the modifications, approval of the modifications, I'd like then an opportunity to maybe discuss with you, come back in two weeks, to come back and present a thorough plan for how we are going to install this, all of it. Everywhere it was supposed to be, it will be. And I'm hopeful that we can present you a, a plan. And again, it will likely involve agreeing to close operations during the installation of the granite.
I don't think you're getting what, what, what we've been talking about, safety-wise. For us to let you open the way that place is set up right now, including that little, I don't even know what it is in the front. It's, it's, nothing's right. The signs aren't even there, where's, any idea when the signs are going up? The box mulch is all done.
There was a, there was a no-left-turn sign that was installed there.
Okay.
Which was what the intent of that island was, was really for, was, I remember.
Where's, where's the sign?
Originally was, the sign is on the, on the right.
Okay.
As you're, as you're exiting, it's a, whatever the symbol is for no, for no-left-turn.
Okay.
Coming out of there.
I guess I'll, I'll take a comment from the board if they want to approve the changes on the, for the planting and approve the modification to the building, but.
There was three things, right? It was the modification to the building, the planting, and.
The building, the plant, the slope, yeah.
And the slope, okay.
But the other, the other thing was, was the parking that they, they changed.
Right, but we're not asking for a modification to the plan. We are going to move forward with putting the granite in. So, really, the modifications, we're asking for approval of the movement of the building, the associated changes around the building and the slope. Jeremy?
I mean, as far as the, those three things, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I want to work with you guys, I want to get this business open. But at the same time, and I, I, I think I appreciate the thought process of shutting down while it's being installed. I'm, I'm a, I'm a little maybe on an island, I don't know if I am, but I'm, I'm on board with that approach, that you would be shutting down. I think that my, my main concern for safety was when, is making this operational as the granite's going in, because it just bottlenecks everything down at that entrance, and it messes up the traffic for, for everybody, across the street, down the road, everywhere. So, that's my personal take, but, but that's kind of my straw poll.
If I could just respond, and maybe I wasn't clear, I, I think Mr. Robson's concern is he doesn't feel that the entrance, as it's currently configured, is safe. But I, it's my understanding, in light of the police chief's review.
Do you have a letter from the police chief?
No, he didn't, I didn't ask him for one, but I'm sure he would.
You want one, we'll get one.
He, he would provide you.
Well, listen.
You can, you can get one.
We're now not.
Change my mind.
Right, but now we're not even talking about proposing to do it with a police detail, as I've suggested. Right, but now we're not even talking about proposing to do it with a police detail, as I've suggested.
Well, you'll still need a detail to be out on the road, once you hit Middlesex Road.
Okay, even if we're closed.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Definitely going to need details.
All right, then, then we will get the detail. But my point is, we're now proposing, and again, I'd, I'd like two weeks to come back to discuss this part of it. I, I, we would propose to shut down during the installation. What it really gives us is about three or four weeks to open in its current configuration, which was, I was about to say, I mean, even though peer reviewer pointed out the fact that it wasn't granite, I, I don't know if there was a determination made that it was unsafe, you know, in its design. And I know the police chief and the building inspector obviously didn't feel it was. But I, I understand your position.
Seen how you can just drive right over the front and go right on the Middlesex Road?
What's that?
You can just drive, if you parked in the parking spot off.
Right.
You could just drive right up and over and go out into Middlesex Road with that type of curbing that you have. There's nothing to hold you back from going across that street. And if you've seen the way the other place operates, and I don't say the other place operates, the patrons that are coming in and out of there, it's a free-for-all. And it's not going to be any different in your place. I can guarantee you that. They have police up there, they have security up there in the parking lot. It's crazy.
Well, then, to address that, again, in the perfect world, we would be allowed to open for approximately three weeks. When the granite comes in, we shut down. We do the granite work. We're done, and then we reopen. The question of whether we can operate for those three weeks safely now, given the curbs are there, and I hear your opinion that we could not, would bringing in a daily officer in the parking lot during those three weeks while we're open?
Do you know that they don't even pay attention to the officer when he tells him he, they can't cross the street from Bahama Breeze over to the other place? They just keep walking? Because what is the police officer going to do? Nothing. They can't.
No, but if, if people, well, but if people were.
The intention's good, but it doesn't work.
But if people were coming in to the parking lot proper and not accessing.
And when it's full, they're going to be across the street at the, the little plaza there and they're going to be running across just like they do at Bahama Breeze over to Nature's Remedy.
Remember, we have significant. We have significant parking at this facility. You can't compare us to the other facility. You yourselves made sure that we would have adequate parking.
We could compare the usage, though, that we see at the other place to say that you are going to be, you're going to be busy and you're going to be full, there's no doubt.
Yeah, no.
There's no doubt.
Can I?
Sure.
I, I just want to jump in here.
Sure, good, absolutely, Mike.
There's no doubt it's going to be busy. I mean, we, we, we all know that, I, I, look, I have a law enforcement background, as you all know. If it makes the situation more comfortable for you, if, if we were to simply shut down when the driveway is being redone. So, removal of the bit berm, replacement of curbing, we're shut down at the, at the driveway entrance. The rest of the curbing throughout the parking lot that would be replaced, that's just the parking lot. We could cone off the parking lot, we could rope it off and, and do it in sections, which is what we would do, and, and simply stay open, but, but be able to replace bit, replace the granite as it's, as it's being, as it's being done. And, and still keep generating revenue for the town, open for business. And, and, and it's really just the driveway entrance and I, that, that I, that I think I'm hearing is most, is most concerning due to the traffic issues that, of traffic coming in and out of there. It's a bottleneck, I get it. But the, but the rest of the, of the granite throughout the parking lot, if that's going to be what's required to be replaced.
It is.
We'll do it. All I'm asking is, let me stay open and, and do it in sections so that, so that we still keep the business going and accomplish the objective here of.
Did you see what just happened here tonight? We just went, and I'm not going to take much longer on this, honestly, we're going to wrap this up. You guys went from, we'll absolutely shut down, it'll be three weeks, we'll get it done. Now all of a sudden, we'll only shut down with the road, we can do it with the park, the parking area, we can cone it off and stuff. So you're already looking to change things. I don't feel comfortable at all.
Well, no, but.
I'm being honest with you.
We're not changing anything, except we're not discussing the park.
You just did, attorney. Attorney.
I'm asking.
Hold on.
I apologize.
Then I'll give you my answer, that'd be no.
Then, then that's fine, then we'll shut, then we won't do that. I'm, I was asking for that as a.
Okay, do you guys want to hear any, you, you want to take comment from us for what you, what we approved for the modifications?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's get on with that.
I think you heard my, uh.
Yep.
My opinion.
Are we doing the straw poll?
This is only for the slope and the, the vegetation that they got to do and approving that they move the building, which multiple times our engineer has affirmed us that they're good with setbacks and all that stuff.
I would approve that.
Okay, Mike?
I would approve those three items, so.
Two.
Or two items, I'm sorry, the approval of the building.
As would I.
Okay. Well, then respectfully, I'd ask if you could vote those modifications, please.
Okay. Can we, I get a motion?
Right, I'll make a motion to approve two modifications. Well, actually, is this still a public hearing, are we supposed to close it?
Uh, well, we have to close it, even though they're coming, it's.
No, we can't close the public hearing.
We can't close the public hearing.
It's still, you're still sort of.
Why, why can't we close the public hearing?
Because then we can't talk to you anymore about the granite curbing.
Right.
Well, I am very respectful of this board and if I understand that at this point you are comfortable with the modifications only.
Everybody is.
Okay, then based on that, I would respectfully ask to be continued for two weeks. We are going to go back and do whatever we can, whatever we can to come back with a proposal that, that you can be acceptable of.
Can I?
Absolutely.
I know you have said that you've observed Nature's Remedy and I've driven past it and seen stuff, but the people running across the street, that's not like Monday through Thursday.
Sure is. Whenever that parking.
It's Christmas time.
No, whenever that parking lot's full. They don't care, they go across it.
Something weekends.
I've only seen it on the weekends.
Whenever the parking lot's full.
Because otherwise, the proposal of to do the granite curbing within the parking lot, blocking off those things and doing the granite curbing there seems reasonable to me.
You got, you got trucks, you got machines, at least two, one's going to bring it over to them, the other one's going to be digging the holes going down, you got concrete going to be mixed, there's a lot of operations going to go on. It's not safe, I'm telling you.
So, obviously I'm not in construction, but if you come back to us and are able to say the trucks can, for the most part, be someplace else than in the parking lot where this is going on? After they drop off the granite, can they go, can you work with some of the other local businesses, have them park across the street or something?
Well, we, and that's what I'm asking for a couple of weeks to do, is be able to come in and show you, look, again, no question on the front, we're going to be shut down.
And I think we all agree that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I want an opportunity to find out from our installers just how much, how many spaces we would have to tie up at any one given time. You know, there could be a way where we could schedule delivery of the product when we're closed? So that the only people that are there on site during the day would be the actual installers and the minimum amount of trucks or, or, you know, equipment that they would need. But give, give me an opportunity to see if we can come up with something. I, David, I.
Nope, absolutely.
I hear you, man. I, I just, you can appreciate these guys, we got to, we got to do it right and we got to get it done. So I appreciate your time tonight and your straw poll. And again, I would respectfully ask that we be continued and we'll be back.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue this to the main person.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Take care.
All right. Next up, approval of minutes for April third, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April third, twenty twenty-five.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstained, three yeses, that passes. All right, any new business topics that, Steve's not here, so.
Then we have a whole thing on, uh.
Hold on, I'm just, Ben, do you have anything to?
Oh, just if you want, updates, so.
One second. These guys free to go?
Yeah.
You don't, don't they have a field report for forty-six Shelburne Ave?
Forty-six Shelburne.
You did a lot of work on it, don't you want us to talk about it?
I didn't even see that, was it? Was this in our new business? Oh, okay. All right, so let's jump to that right now so we can get these guys on.
Yeah, absolutely, go for it.
Dave, Jake, you got the floor.
This is for Enclave, right, the field report you're talking about?
Yes.
Um, so pretty much status quo, there's a couple of interiored down silt fences, the basins are still silty. A couple of silt fences down around, basins two and five, two and five, I believe. But nothing that's really out of the ordinary for any construction. The, excuse me, the ongoing issue or I guess silt buildup and ponding at the site entrance. If it rains, I'm, I'm sure, rain's still getting offsite. As far as the culvert that goes across the street, I, it might still be a little too early to confirm it, but it seems like the jet grouting around the utility corridor has, has helped. I know when we've gone out there a couple of days after the rain, there hasn't necessarily been water flowing like there was, was in the past, but it's anecdotal more than, more than anything. That's kind of my overall summary.
Jake, you have anything to add to that?
I have a question about one, because I spoke to Enclave recently and they were saying part of the reason was like something about like a, like the last thing you were talking about, they said part of the reason might have been like a sediment buildup that was like bypass, the water making, like water bypassed the system altogether and stuff.
On the, the surface, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and so I don't know if that's valid, you obviously know a lot more than I do, but they said they've been doing regular maintenance on it and that should resolve the issues, so it won't happen in the future.
So, the way, the way it's built, I mean, maybe they put a sandbag or something there during storm events, I don't know. I know that the rim of that catch basin is slightly higher than the pavement around it. So I know water does flow around that in times of high flow or even in low flow. So it's not capturing everything it could. I know there's ponding that happens in front of the, kind of that rip route flume into basin eight. Because the, the elevation of that's a little higher than the pavement two. But, I mean, they, they could be doing, you know, manual controls out there to help divert the flow into those basins, but those are most likely temporary.
Okay. That's about it, right? Did, I know Steve had mentioned two meetings ago maybe about talking with Paul Welcome and seeing what we could do about permitting and stuff up there till he said.
We, so now the, me and Pam will both be on every, everything that comes out of there automatically, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, Jeremy, anything to add? I don't, Kim? Mike?
I just had a question, the ponding on the emergency road?
Yes.
Is there a solution proposed without, or is that just?
Jake, you correct me if I'm wrong, because he's the, he's the boots on the ground for this operation, but, um, so the ponding in the roads typically due to a, I think it's a clogged catch basin that's right there. Yeah, there's a still sack in it, but it hasn't been, like, maintained in a while, so everything's just building up and, as you can tell, it's ponding there. And that roadway isn't paved over in that area, is it? I think it's just, I think it's just like a dirt access road, so any sort of ponding or?
Going up the back is still, it's still dirt?
Oh wait, no.
Uh, this.
No, that's paved, yeah, that's paved, yeah. Okay. Anything else, Mike?
Nope.
Okay. Everybody good with what they heard tonight? Okay. That being said, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
All right. Old business decision for one industrial way and five industrial way, ninety-three Kendall and fifty Westfied.
So you received the drafts by email earlier in the week. And it's all based on the, your approval from the last meeting.
Yep.
So, um, the decisions are all drawn up, so you would just need to sign them.
Perfect. Okay.
To Dave, right?
Hmm?
To Dave, or all of them?
All of them.
Yeah, okay.
And then before you leave, we get the Mylar for the A and R.
Excellent. Kim, anything else tonight? Mike, anything else?
Just going back to, I guess this, I should, well, they're there, but is there, are we able to enforce that they clean out the catch basins?
That's what I believe we're starting to work on a little bit more heavily right now, right?
Yeah, and, well, so, I mean, I just finally got them to, because one of the residence pipes is exposed right now, which is causing a water leak. And I just finally got them to get working on that. And I'm trying to get one of them into a planning board meeting, I've been trying since January and they're kind of, both Ted and Austin have been kind of passing the ball back and forth to each other, so I'm hoping one of these days.
Understandable.
Somebody will come. But, yeah.
Okay. Okay. While we're signing those, I think we can have a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great Easter, everybody, everybody enjoy their holiday.
Happy Easter.
Enjoy your family. Have a good night.
And this is, you asked for an update last time, I think, but I talked, I was able to.